Excellent. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is July 7, 2021, and we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, I will note that all three of us are present today. And we will begin with our department updates. First on the agenda, Ms. Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me again. I don't have a lot to share today, but some important information nonetheless. We do remain in blue advisory. Our number per hundred thousand is going to go up a little bit this week. I think it is going to be somewhere in the range of thirty-four. In the past week, we have seen about three days where we have had ten or more cases identified. So that tells us this virus is still circulating. We are not out of this. I cannot say if it is because people who are unvaccinated are not taking as many precautions as they should be and are putting themselves at risk if it's due to increase in variants circulating, a combination of the two or something else. But what I can certainly say is that vaccine is the way out of this. Vaccine and precautions. We can continue to follow precautions and be vaccinated, and we can get through this. I want to take this opportunity, because we are having continued circulation, to remind people that precautions when you are sick or a close contact have not changed. So if you are sick, and by that I mean if you test positive, whether you have symptoms or not, you need to isolate for at least ten days. Isolate away from others so that you are not spreading that infection to them. I say at least ten days. That's not a change. It is ten days and no fever for at least twenty-four hours, and your symptoms are improving if you have them. So it could be longer than ten days, although not usually. And I'll tell you what, we haven't went through this in quite a while, right? If you are a close contact of someone, so for instance, a family member, then you need to quarantine. So again, you may turn positive and become infectious at any point over the next fourteen days after you're exposed. And so we want you to quarantine so that you are not putting others at risk. The trick in family units is if you cannot isolate the person who is sick, that quarantine does not start. You are in quarantine, but the time for your fourteen-day quarantine does not really start until the end of their isolation. So it can be longer than ten days or fourteen days. The CDC did change and ease up some of the quarantine guidance, but fourteen days is still the gold standard. So I just mentioned that as a reminder, that if you are, if you test positive or family member tests positive, someone who's a close contact, isolation and quarantine still remains what you need to do and recommendations that you need to follow. And all of that, as I prepared today, reminded me of an article that I'd recently seen. It was written in June by a medical doctor and PhD, Dr. Masip. And I just want to share a little bit of this with you, and it's entitled, "When Will the Pandemic End?" Paraphrasing Martin Luther King Jr., "No one is safe until we are all safe." A pandemic by definition is a worldwide problem. This means that it doesn't matter whether your country is free of the virus or not. If COVID-19 is running rampant somewhere on our planet, we are all still in danger. Each new contagion is an opportunity for SARS-CoV-2 to mutate into an aggressive variant, one that perhaps could escape the antibodies we have generated thanks to the vaccine. So again, vaccine is very important. And it ends with, "Parts of the world will return to their normal lives during this year. Others may take another year, perhaps two. In the meantime, we will all still be together in the same tunnel staring at the light. There is no reason for celebration when somewhere in the world people are dying of a preventable disease. We should never forget this, even when the COVID-19 crisis is over." And with that, I will end with just stating that in terms of vaccine, we are at fifty-five point four percent of our eligible population fully vaccinated. We continue to see slow but steady increases. We do have vaccine available. It is still easy to access. We do continue to plan lots of outreaches. And towards the end of this month, on the twenty-third, we will have a clinic at Banneker Center from six to eight PM. That will be for people twelve and up. So we'll have Johnson &amp; Johnson and Pfizer. And on the thirtieth, we will return to Crestmont at, from one to four, and that will be, I believe, from twelve and up, ages twelve and up as well. Assembly Hall is still open, and of course, we have Moderna Mondays on Miller Drive. You can sign up and register at ourshot.in.gov. That gets you pre-registered and makes that visit very easy. But again, if you don't have the ability to pre-register, people will take you, especially at Assembly Hall, it is easy to walk in and get that vaccine. And we will keep you updated as we schedule additional outreach clinics. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It's just very good to be reminded of what all the protocols are. People are beginning to relax and kind of trying to go back to normal. And, and some of those may have slipped people's minds, and it's good to have a reminder of it.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I heard yesterday on the news that half of all the new cases are the Delta variant, which is more contagious and more virulent. And so it's even more important that people get vaccinated. If you're vaccinated, fully vaccinated, even if you get COVID, you're far, far less likely to have serious complications and to end up in the hospital.
Yeah, definitely. Yes, it's a great reminder, everyone, please, please, please get vaccinated. If you have questions, contact someone at the Public Health Clinic or your physician. You can talk to the pharmacist. You have a lot of options for information. Don't just rely on social media. All right. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. We appreciate you and your hard work and the hard work of your staff, the board, and of course, Dr. Sharp, too. Thanks. All right. Next up is Allison Moore.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I have some hot-off-the-press news. I just got off the phone with the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, and they have informed us that we do, in fact, qualify for federal assistance. And so we will be putting that information, as the logistics of that comes available, on our county website. So more than likely, starting next week, SBA will be in our county, and we will be pushing that out so that the public is aware of how they can make an appointment and, and meet up with these individuals to see what they may, in fact, qualify for. We do also qualify for the Indiana Disaster Relief Fund, which is also very exciting for individuals that may, in fact, not qualify for the SBA Small Business Administrative Loans. The Small Business Administrative Loans are for individual residents as well as business owners. The Indiana Disaster Relief Fund is only for Indiana residents, not business owners. And all that information, as it becomes available, will be on our county website. That website I'll drop in the chat is co.munro.in.us. We also have the community organizations active in disasters. Our Monroe County branch has worked with the United Way, and we do have, starting today, a process to see if you could qualify for United Way Relief Funds. So if you are someone that was affected by the June eighteenth flood and need immediate assistance, that information is now on our county website as well. You actually can apply for that fund through the United Way website. So there are a couple different options for some funding now, and it just sometimes takes a little bit of time to get those things set up and, and the process. And so I continue to say, I'm so sorry for those that were affected, but we are working super hard to get, get funds in your hands and assistance if possible. So check out our county website, and as more information comes available, that is where it will be. We will also, of course, share that on social media and as well as many of our news outlets and try to get that information out. If you have any questions regarding how to get any kind of assistance, and you don't see it on our county website, you're always welcome to call 211 or go to the in211.org website, and they can gear you in the correct direction as well. We also have some mold guidance that our health department collaborated with us on. So if you need to know if you're cleaning properly and you're making sure that things need to be disposed of, and you're just not quite sure, that information is also on our county website as well. It is July. It's hard to believe that it's July, but it is. And I'm excited to report that this month, we are, our preparedness topic is heat safety. And we have definitely hit the extreme safety in regards of heat. So some things to think about are to, of course, stay hydrated and stay inside if you have air conditioning. Make sure that you have an airflow with fans if you don't have air conditioning. And if you don't, and you don't have fans, it's encouraging to find another place to go to cool off if you start to get overheated. And again, your, your best bet for safety for yourself is to stay hydrated in those hot, hot times. We have two blood drives scheduled for July, and they are July thirteenth and July fifteenth. Both of those drives are going to be held at the Monroe County Convention Center. The day drive is from ten to three on the thirteenth, and the evening drive is from two to seven on the fifteenth. And I know I brought good news on those drives last week, but I'd like to let you know that we are in first place in the amount of blood collected in the state of Indiana. So that was news that passed my desk this week. So I am excited to share additional news with you, that we are the leading of the pack in regards of blood drives across the state of Indiana. And I thank those that are Monroe County residents that have been very, very beneficial in this community by making those donations. So thank you to those individuals. And of course, the Convention Center and the Board of Commissioners for all that collaboration that our office has had to make these drives so successful. What questions for me?
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
A lot of good news today. It's great to hear about the federal assistance. It's wonderful that we're at the top of Indiana in blood donations. Thank you for all your good news.
Absolutely. Takes us all, but it's wonderful.
Commissioner Giffens?
I have, I have two questions. If people do not have fans, is there any place that they can get them for free? I know in the past, there have been programs that have helped people get fans.
You can contact our office, and we could work to collaborate to get any assistance that they may need. We do, when we hit, when we hit in the cold months, when we hit bitter cold temperatures, and then in the hot months, we have a target. And when we hit those hot months, we do open cooling stations. It's not been that extreme heat at this point where we've hit that trigger, but our office monitors that. And when we do hit those triggers, we'll start advertising, and we do have locations across the community geographically where individuals can go for short periods of time to cool off.
Excellent. And the Indiana Relief Fund, for example, I, my homeowner's insurance will not cover the damage that we suffered. Can I apply for relief through the Indiana Relief Fund since, even though I have insurance, they won't cover the damage?
So the process is, you have to apply for the Small Business Administrative Loan first. If you are an individual that isn't sure you want to have that, you're not sure what that monthly payment might be, I encourage you to go when these SBA loans become available and they come into our community, meet with them and see what that, what that entails for you. If you do not qualify for the SBA loan, then you will automatically be moved, moved over to meet with the Indiana Relief Fund and start that application process. If you qualify for the SBA loan, and then you decide right there on the spot, you know what, I was really hoping for the Indiana Disaster Relief Fund. I don't think I'm willing to pay this monthly payment. I don't want a loan. You can walk away, no questions asked. So, but you don't qualify for the Indiana Disaster Relief Fund unless you have applied for the SBA loan and have, in fact, been denied.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And, and you are going to be posting information on how residents can apply for the SBA loan on our website? The location where they're going to be at to apply?
Absolutely. They will more than likely be at the Monroe County Convention Center, and they will more than likely start next Monday. But as soon as that information a hundred percent becomes readily available, we will definitely be putting that information on the website in any steps and question, you know, hot topic questions and any of that information to make sure that residents understand the process and how everything works. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. We appreciate you and your time and all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Now we turn to Ms. Ridge for a report on roads and streets and all kinds of other good stuff.
Good morning. So we have a crack ceiling contractor in town that will be working on Bernal Pike and then on to the south portion of Hart Street Road. Our crews for paving are on Ketchum Road, and will probably be there for a couple weeks because it's a very lengthy road with a lot of work to be done. We have our mowing crews out at various locations around the county. And we had Bridge Number Seventy-seven resurfaced last Friday after the storm damage, and that has been completed. Monday opened this next round of community crossing applications. I have those pretty well completed and prepared, ready to send. The deadline is at the end of the month. So the roads that we have, have put into this round of call for projects is Fish Road, Wisnan Road, Mount Carmel Road, Low Gap Road, Howard Road, Starnes Road, Guthrie Road, and Chapel Hill Road. It comes to an overall cost of one point one nine million dollars. If we're awarded the projects, it's a fifty-fifty match. It's approximately fourteen point four four five miles, and that comes out to about eighty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars per mile. So that kind of gives you an estimate of what it costs to pave a road. Typically, we will submit these applications in July, and then NDOT will take all the applications under consideration. They go through a scoring process, and then we would find out this fall if we are awarded any of those projects. So the paving of those, the roads, if they are awarded, would be in 2022 to start. This is how we're starting to build our paving program for the upcoming year, so we can have a plan ahead, get the bids in the fall. Typically, you can get better bids in the fall to win a contractor starting set up their next season. So that's where we're at.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just never stop being astounded by how very expensive roads are.
It is. And, you know, I guess I just want to give a little bit of background. I think one of the next questions that somebody could have is, how did we choose these roads? We have seven hundred and twenty-five miles of roadway. Every road is required by NDOT to have what we call a Pacer rating, one through ten. These roads are all four or below, so they are inspected every two years by our crews. We are, we put this into our asset management program, and then we send it to LTAP for approval. This is required by NDOT to submit for any federal aid project, community crossings, federal aid projects. So that, that's how we choose the roads that we choose to move on to.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, when I saw your email about it, I read it as one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. So I, I didn't think that was quite accurate.
I might, you know, might have been, maybe I left off the zero there, which is major.
I, I was hoping that, that was the cost for these roads, but I didn't think so.
Sorry about that. I was trying to get the financial commitment letters to you guys so I can get these submitted, and I left off that zero.
I was just hoping, you know, I mean.
If it was a thousand dollars to do fifteen miles, we'd just, you know, everything would be black.
Would be done.
Yeah.
Every year. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. We appreciate you. And yes, everyone, please drive carefully through construction season. This is, there are a lot of folks out working in this dangerous heat and humidity, but also in the dangerous conditions of being near the roadways. So please keep everybody safe. Slow down and, and keep an eye out for, for all the crews. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we have an update from Ms. Richmond on Health Net. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. It's great to see you all on this hot summer day. So this is my annual report on Health Net. You've been hearing about volunteers in medicine and the acquisition for a number of years now. So as you know, Health Net is a nonprofit federally qualified health center with a mission to improve lives with compassionate healthcare and support services regardless of ability to pay. I have been thrilled that the demographics of the center really do show that we are achieving exactly what I hoped to achieve when I went after this acquisition. So last year, as you know, we faced a renovation, recruitment, and then the pandemic. Then we went to a cohort model. So last year was just obviously an unusually ridiculous year to build a new practice. Nevertheless, we had over fourteen hundred unique patients that came to the center, which was more than volunteers in medicine would have in a typical year. So I, you have a report that has a lot of demographic data from last year. Only, normally, I don't include that in annual report, but I thought you might be interested in what the first year looked like for us. Interestingly, in the first six months of this year, we already have seen almost twelve hundred people. So we are almost halfway through the year, I mean, we're halfway through the year and have almost have seen the full amount of people we saw last year for the entire year. So we can see that, and that's with the first six months of a continuing pandemic and social distancing and so forth. So we can see that the demand is there, and I think in the next six months already, if you look at month to month, the volume is increasing steadily. And so I think we're about to see the lid blown off, and we will, I think, see what we expected to see when we did this. Also, I just wanted to mention that we are, the population we had hoped to see would be Medicaid people, insured people, Medicare people, because the difference between volunteers in medicine, Health Net, is that as not being a free clinic, we can see people who are insured. We can see all ages. And we started seeing kids last July. Our, you know, obviously, we had to stop our dental practice for a number of months. That came back in the summer for emergencies only, and then in the fall. So again, we're really still building the practice. But right now, in the first six months of this year, sixty percent of our population is insured, forty-six percent with Medicaid. That means we're seeing a low-income population primarily, which is what FQHCs were designed to do. They're the safety net medical system across the country. And people experiencing homelessness, which was the VIM population, except then when they started getting insured, we couldn't see them any longer, which is very frustrating for us because seeing people living in poverty, experiencing homelessness, is exactly, essentially the specialty area of VIM and Health Net. And so we're delighted to be able to see people who are experiencing homelessness and so forth. Looking ahead, we have some really exciting expansion plans that is in the report, but I want to mention, later this month, we will have our first full-time pediatrician, which we're very excited about because that will, I think, really open the doors to kids. And, you know, it's a good timing because that will be back-to-school shots and physicals and, well, baby checks and so forth. We are doing increasing amounts of prenatal care onsite at the clinic and with a grant, waiting for a non-stress fetal, fetal non-stress monitor. Not sure exactly what that's called, but that will help our prenatal services. And then two other exciting initiatives is that with money from the HERSA American Rescue Plan, funding for health centers, we are working with Shalom to set up a mini clinic onsite at Shalom. Now, you may remember that volunteers in medicine for many years had a nurse practitioner onsite at Shalom and at Crawford Apartments once a week. We had a pharmacist also at Crawford. We had a medical assistant also at Shalom. At that point, we were not able to do actual primary care because those are people who became insured, but we could do early identification of medical risk factors, help intervene before people had to go to the hospital. And now with this money, we're hoping to actually set up a full, a full, you know, a mini, a full mini clinic, I mean, an office at Shalom, to conduct health screenings, and identify chronic disease risk factors and untreated medical conditions, provide primary care, prescribe medications, help guests establish a primary care provider at a location of their choice. And there's no obligation to come to Health Net. We're, our catchword is choice, and so people can go wherever they want. Refer people for labs and follow-up and so forth. So there's a lot of logistics to work through, a lot of regulations. Any place that Health Net has a presence has to also meet joint commission standards, very complicated, but we're working on that. With this money, we will be hiring two full-time people to be based at the Bloomington Health Center to coordinate homeless services in the county and to get to know the services, the service providers, and, and so forth. And then we envision street medicine, street psychiatry, and we've got big plans, fingers crossed on that. And then last month, we moved forward Health Net in general with a mobile health initiative. And Cook Medical Group has given us a substantial amount of money. And then again, through this HERSA Recovery Act money, we will, we were able to order a health, a mobile health unit, which will take five to seven months to build out. We're in the process of writing additional grants for operational funds to provide point-of-care testing on the unit, the medications and supplies and so forth. That will serve the low-income rural residents of Monroe County and Morgan County primarily to start. And then on weekends, we hope to use the unit to do health insurance enrollment and health screenings in the low-income Black and Brown communities, in particular of Marion County of Indy, InterCity Indianapolis, to make sure people are insured. There's still many people, and there's still, you know, you know, many health disparities with regard to racial and ethnic groups that we think the mobile health unit will help us to address. In Monroe County, that would be primarily because of rural geographic issues. Also, Morgan County, where many of the rural counties are twenty miles away from the nearest medical provider. Marion County, not for geography, but because of health disparities. And so we will be requesting, we are requesting the same amount of funding as we have had in your budget for next year. We've got some exciting things going on, and at this point, we're feeling like we've just opened the clinic because things are, you know, just starting to take off. You know, we've been in pandemic survival mode, so we think that we're really So we think that we're really going to start to see some of the impacts in the next year. So thank you for this opportunity. Are there any questions?
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Well, this is such very good news. We recently got our justice study of the entire justice system back. And one of the very recommended components of it was getting people on Medicaid. Because so often, people who end up in jail, if they had received treatment earlier, they would have never had to go to jail at all. So hearing that you're working on all of this kind of thing is just wonderful. I mean, obviously, with the mobile unit, you'll have a lot of outreach and everything. How are you trying to attract people to get help with signing up for Medicaid?
Well, right now, again, because of the pandemic, we haven't really done any outreach enrollment clinics. That is something our enrollment specialists can do, and we hope to start doing that again. For instance, we will be at two health expos this month, the Children's Expo and Redeemer Fair. An enrollment specialist will be there with us, not to do enrollments on the spot because there's no place for privacy, talking about income and so forth, but to talk to people about that we can do that at the center. So we could perhaps do something at the prison. I mean, there's things that as the pandemic eases up, there may be things that we can do by way of outreach to do that. And so we will be, with Jack Hopkins' money, be doing a public awareness campaign about Health Net in general. And hopefully, as we get more people coming to Health Net, we will also be able to educate people that we can help them with enrollment.
Thank you. That sounds like just what we need at this time. It's very good.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, I have several comments. It was just so uplifting to read your report, Nancy. I mean, it felt so good. I need to come over and see the renovations, first of all. And I really appreciate the fact that there's a pediatrician that'll be there because if parents come in with their kids, the parents are getting treatment, then the next time the child has to come, it's just a normal place. They've been there. It feels safe. Mom and dad have gotten their treatment there. I think it makes a real difference in terms of treating the whole family and making it easier. I love the fact you're going to Shalom, that you're looking to expand to Crawford House, back to Crawford House, I think it is, yeah. And, you know, we've been talking about homeless issues in all kinds of ways. And according to Emily Pike at New Hope for Families, one of the three major reasons that people become homeless is the cost of healthcare. And so the fact that you're helping to fight that would really speaks to the fact that you're helping to prevent homelessness in different populations. So that's just critical, I think. I do have one question. Are you doing any telehealth of any sort?
Oh, absolutely. We're doing a lot of telehealth. And right now, we've been trying to hire a therapist, a behavioral health therapist for Bloomington. We have not been able to do that, but we have been able to connect people with psychiatry and therapy through telehealth in Indy. All during the pandemic, we were doing telehealth primary care. For that matter, we're doing parking lot car health. I mean, if people came during the pandemic, we would screen them if they had any of the symptoms. We just asked them to stay in their car, and somebody would go to them. So we're doing all sorts of creative things to make sure people get care. We also, I just want to make sure people know, and people listening, that we have transportation assistance through a grant through the Bloomington Health Foundation. We want to make sure that the rural communities know that. If you can't get to the health center, let us know. We can give you a gas card. We can send an Uber for you. And then we also have Volunteers in Medicine Board set up a financial assistance fund for people who can't pay either the co-pay for their insurance or more likely, their treatment plan involves a specialist that's outside of the Health Net system that they can't afford. We can help them with that. Want to make sure that nobody is turned away. We have assistance in Bloomington to help people get the care that they need when they need it. And so we just want to make sure people know that.
I'm so glad you're here in our community.
Thank you. It's an honor to be doing this work.
Yeah, it's amazing work, and you answered the question I had for you, so thank you for that. And it just seems like you and the board have this vision, and it's finally coming to fruition. And it was such an amazing vision. How is that all going to happen? And it's all happening, and more so. So kudos to everyone involved because it's something to really be proud of. So great work.
And as always, thank you all for your support. We couldn't do it without you, and it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Richmond. We appreciate you being here today. Excellent. And next on our agenda is public comment. And this would be for items that are not on our agenda. Every agenda item, as well as this public comment time, the commenters are limited to three minutes total. At 2:30, you will hear a tone. Thank you. And when you hear that tone, you have 30 seconds remaining to complete your thoughts, finish your sentence. And we will go ahead and open up this public comment period again for items not on our agenda. Just simply raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Let's see, and I do not see anyone with a hand raised, so we will move on. And I will note that we do not have any minutes from last week to approve today, so we will move on to item six, please.
To approve the claims docket, accounts payable, July 7, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for accounts payable is $937,276.95. $405,947.50 was for the Convention and Visitors Bureau for third-quarter operational funds. $119,752.52 was for Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield for primarily June claims with some fees as well. And finally, $82,668 was for downtown Bloomington for the third-quarter convention center services.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And I do not see any hands raised. Mr. Cockrell is out on vacation, so we're grateful to have Ms. Rice to assist us with our meeting this morning. Good morning. Would you please call the roll on approval of claims docket accounts payable, July 7, 2021?
I sure will. So, Thomas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Giffens?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 3-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. All right, and we will move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-27 to amend Plan Commission Ordinance 2008-23.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Schilling here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. The purpose of this ordinance is to correct a Scrivener's error that was recently discovered in Plan Commission Ordinance 2008-23. So back in 2006, Joe Green applied for a plan unit development with the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission reviewed the application and recommended approval subject to a number of conditions. And one of those conditions included a 100-foot right-of-way dedication near Tap Road. And the reason for that condition was the staff thought it was required by the thoroughfare plan. During the Plan Commission hearing on that application, the highway engineer testified that that dedication was not required according to the thoroughfare plan. So the Plan Commission agreed to remove that condition and sent the application to the Commissioners with a positive recommendation. The Commissioners approved the plan unit development with the conditions, but without the 100-foot dedication. So two years later, an application to amend the Joe Green PUD was applied or submitted, and the staff again recommended approval subject to the conditions that had been previously approved by the Commissioners. That went to the Commissioners, and the Commissioners approved it. However, it was recently discovered that the ordinance form that was used for the 2008 approval included the original staff recommendations from 2006 and not the conditions that were actually approved by the Commissioners in 2006. So the ordinance now has a, the 2008-23 ordinance has a 100-foot right-of-way dedication that we regard as a Scrivener's error, and this ordinance will remove that condition from the ordinance.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Just glad that Scrivener's error was found.
Commissioner Giffens?
So there's still an 80-foot right-of-way, is that correct?
Well, whenever they come in for a development plan for that site, there will be an 80-foot requirement imposed at that time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Schilling. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Do not see any. So Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-27?
Well, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
She passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Excellent. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-28 to add Monroe County Code Chapter 206, official Monroe County website and internet publication of notices.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Schilling, would you tell us all about this, please?
Thank you very much. This ordinance will, as you noted, establish Code Chapter 206, the Monroe County Code. And the county is required to publish notifications of certain events in the newspaper. And sometimes, we're required to do it on multiple occasions, multiple weeks for each notification. For example, a tax sale, we have to publish three notices in the newspaper before we can conduct the tax sale. The legislature recently changed the law to allow counties to, when they have a situation where there's multiple publications required, to publish the first publication in the newspaper. And then subsequent publications can be made on the county's official website with a few conditions. And this ordinance establishes that practice and sets forth the conditions. One of the conditions is that you have to designate the official county website, which this does, www.co.m o n r o e i n d u s. You designate sort of a custodian, an official custodian, for the internet notification program. And this ordinance designates the training specialist at the Technical Services Department as the official custodian. And the duties of that custodian would be to ensure that the notices remain on the internet for at least seven days, to retain a hard copy of all notices published on the website, and to provide certifications of publication dates on the website. So that if somebody wanted to know how long that was on the website, they would go to the training specialist, and they would prepare a certification form saying, "This particular notice occurred from this date to this date on the county's website." So that's all this ordinance does, and we think it'll save the county some money.
Yes. Great. All right, let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
It looks like this week, we're not spending money. We're saving money. That's a nice change.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I hope it saves people a few headaches too, so. Thanks for putting this together.
Yeah, I appreciate the click action on this. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-28?
George, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Passes 3-0. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve presentation of county Form 144.
Second.
Ms. Gregory? Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to present the county form number 144. It's a State Board of Accounts prescribed form, which is a statement of salaries and wages for the county. This is an annual requirement to be filed by each officer, board, or commission whose officers or employees are paid by county funds. So we, the Auditor's Office, must receive these forms by July 2 of each year. And in turn, the county auditor must present the forms to the Board of Commissioners. And you have until prior to August 20, you need to review and make your recommendations. So these are those forms for your review.
Ms. Gregory, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I hope that these are all correct. When I look through them, I'm like, how would I ever know? Because it is just a massive document. So thanks for putting it together.
Absolutely. Kim Shell got them to us, so it was an undertaking for her.
Good point. Excellent. Thank you so much. We will review those and bring those back. And we don't actually have an item for voting today. We just received this report. And we appreciate the explanation, and I'm sure we will be in touch if we have questions.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to item D, please.
Looks like we will be spending money after all. Move to approve Resolution 2021-33, the extension of the inter-local agreement with the Monroe County Trustee Corporation regarding COVID-19 support. Fund name, Rainy Day, and it has already been appropriated to Rainy Day. Fund number 1186, in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Rice, would you tell us all about this, please?
I sure would. I'd be happy to. So you guys, it's sort of in a forward-thinking approach with the township trustees. The Commissioners and the Council both approved an inter-local agreement to provide extra assistance to people who were facing some financial distress during COVID-19. As you know, the public may not know, but you guys are aware that one of the township trustees' statutory responsibilities is to provide financial assistance to the residents in their township who are facing financial distress. And you provided, with the Council's funding, assistance during COVID. That agreement, that inter-local agreement expired. This, what's before you today, extends it through the month of July, which is the period that the governor of Indiana has extended his emergency declaration. Or until January 1 of next year, depending upon whichever comes sooner. The governor has been extending his declaration month by month. And we don't know whether it will extend every month. We keep thinking it's going to expire, and he keeps extending it. And so, and Dave Schilling and I were talking yesterday, it's the kind of thing that he has to do on a month-by-month basis. So the State Board of Accounts had previously taken the position with us that this was the kind of interlocal you could enter into while there was an emergency declaration for COVID. We and legal are going to explore whether there's an ability to do this kind of interlocal post-pandemic. And so therefore, I'm asking you today to just to- So therefore, I'm asking you today to just approve this one, which will give us another month, buys us some time. And we will most likely be coming back to you for additional extensions or approval of this kind of relationship because we found it very helpful. The township has found it helpful. And it's a great way, you know, we were just talking with Nancy Richmond about people who are, you know, really in facing poverty or facing issues in our community. And this is a solution to help those people. And it's a great partnership between township and the county. So today I'd like you to approve it. And with the full knowledge that we will probably be back to you with for their extensions in the future.
Excellent. Thank you so much for working on this. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I'm very glad we're going to be able to continue this. And I'd like to thank the county council for their cooperation with it.
Good point. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, as we talk with people in other parts of the state, very few people are doing this kind of thing. So I'm really proud of the fact that we've been able to put this together.
Yeah, it's been really helpful and great work by the trustees to utilize these funds appropriately to help folks out. And we're at the $125,000 mark in terms of how much has been placed into the fund and in the increments. And it's interesting because as we're watching this, the CDC extended the moratorium on evictions to the end of July. But then if the governor's order does lapse at the end of July, then that's really when a lot of help will be needed. So if there is some way to do this so that we can extend it beyond the emergency order, that would be phenomenal. And I would like to think that the council would agree, and I imagine they would. They've been so great to work with on this. So if there's any way to do that, I appreciate that you're exploring that. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, Ms. Rice, would you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-33?
Sure. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all your help. We don't have any appointments today, but a couple of announcements. If you're looking for information on the city's proposed annexation, please go to co.mone road.in.us and you will find information on your homepage, including links that would be providing additional information for you. Also important to note that we always are accepting Board and Commission appointments at the same, go to the same homepage and go to Boards and Commissions to see the full list of all of our various commissions, boards and groups that are helping to inform and advise Monroe County government so that we can best serve the people of Monroe County. A special note, we do have an opening on the Economic Development Commission and we have Drainage Board and Affordable Housing, so among others. But even if there isn't an opening right now, it's always great to get your application in. Quite. Also of note, the criminal justice reform study we reviewed two weeks ago at an evening meeting, we are going to be talking about it again tonight at 5:30 via Zoom. And we invite the public to come and make comments, to offer suggestions. We want to hear from the public. But we will be calling this as a joint meeting between the council and the commissioners, but also a number of other elected officials in the criminal justice realm and department heads will be present as well. So this is a great time to share your ideas, your concerns with all of us in one place at one time. So again, that's tonight at 5:30 via Zoom. We hope to see you all there. So I'm going to see if my colleagues have anything else to add. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just want to, again, thank Nancy Richmond and everybody at her operation for what they're doing in our community.
Yeah, it's great. Great work. So we do have a work session. It looks like we have one item, definitely. What time would you like to come back for the work session? Any preferences? About 11:10?
Sure.
All right. So we will come back at 10 minutes after 11 for our work session. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. And thank you, Katz, and thank you, T S D, for all your hard work.